Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming and welcome to the Thursday, April 15th, 2021 special meeting public work session of the Portsmouth City School Board. I would ask now that we pause for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. We're now delaying the pledge of allegiance and mission statement by board member Vernon Tillage.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you, sir. Agenda item 2.5 attendance. Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Present.
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 Here.
Present. Thank you so much. Agenda item 2.6 approval of the agenda for April 15th, 2021.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion been made by Ms. Hines, second by Ms. Thomas. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Atkinson? Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Parent? Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake? Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
He didn't hear you, Kat. It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. I apologize. Agenda item 3.1, it's gonna be a closed session. Agenda item, I ask that they be read this time by board member Thomas.
I move that the board enter into a closed meeting under the provisions of section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the following purposes: consultation with legal counsel concerning a legal matter requiring the advice by such counsel as permitted under subsection A.7, and consideration of a request for religious exemption from school attendance as permitted under subsection A.2.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Thomas, second by Ms. Hines. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. We're now, we'll move into closed session.
I move that each board member certify that to the best of his or her knowledge only matters which are lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and which were identified in a motion to go into closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the preceding closed meeting.
Motion to make by Mr. Atkinson.
Yes, please.
I forgot to share. I move that each board member certify that to the best of his or her knowledge only matters which are lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and which were identified in a motion to go into closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the preceding closed meeting.
Motion to make by Mr. Atkinson.
Second by Board Member Tillage. Any discussion?
Saying none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you, agenda item 3.2, consideration of a religious exemption, roll call vote, we need to entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval.
Atkinson.
Second.
Motion to make by Ms. Atkinson and second by Board Member Tillage. Any discussion? Saying none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Reverend Patullo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you, agenda item 3.2, consideration of a religious exemption, roll call vote, we need to entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval.
Atkinson.
Second.
Motion to make by Ms. Atkinson and second by Board Member Tillage. Any discussion? Saying none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Reverend Patullo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you, agenda item 3.3, discussion, annual special education plan and Part B flow-through for 2021-22 school year.
Good evening Chairman Parent.
Testing, testing. Good evening Chairman Patullo, Vice Chairman Atkinson, Dr. Bracy, members of the school board. I'm here this evening to present the 2021-222 Annual Special Education Plan on behalf of the Office of Special Education and Related Services. This plan outlines a former agreement between the local school board and the Virginia Department of Education regarding the provisions of special education and related services for students with disabilities. All federal monies allocated in the annual plan solely benefit students with disabilities. On Tuesday, March 9, 2021, the Portsmouth Special Education Advisory Committee, known as CAT, met and approved the plan in accordance to VDOE regulations. And tonight, I have a few board members with me. I have Chairman Shirley Edwards, Vice Chair Gloria Burns, and Board Member Mrs. Blackman-Winn. They are here today to support the plan. You have received a copy of the Annual Special Education Plan application as well as grant summaries for Grant 611 and Grant 619. Grant 611 funds school age students with disabilities from K through 12 in the amount of $3,634,641. Grant 619 funds our preschoolers with disabilities in the amount of $185,390. As you note from the summary sheets, the majority of the grant is used for salaries and benefits. The next largest amount is used for contracted services. The grant also provides funding for staff development and structural materials and supplies. Finally, in your packet, you received an updated copy of the inter-agency agreement with Hampton Roads Regional Jail. The plan is due to VDOE by May 14, 2021. Thank you for your time and consideration. Are there any questions?
Any questions from board members?
Yes, sir.
That means you did a superb job, thank you so much.
Oh, thank you so much.
Agenda item 3.4, the communications report by Ms. Lauren Naresco.
Good evening. Hello, Ms. Naresco. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Good evening, Chairman Patullo, Vice Chair Atkinson, and members of the board. I am so excited to be here tonight to present the annual communications update for the 2021 school year. So, we'll start right at the beginning. Roughly a month after the last communication update to the board, the announcement was made that all schools were to be closed for the rest of the school year as the COVID-19 coronavirus began to spread in the state. While we had mapped out some proactive goals and measures for the rest of the year and for the 2021 school year, like every other faction of K-12 education, communications really began operating out of a crisis response model. So, what did that look like? It was multifaceted. For one, we created a coronavirus webpage where we were posting the latest updates from the Health Services Office, the Health Department, and the CDC. This page became the foundation of some of the most basic questions about the virus, including, as you may be able to see on the screen, once school operations were impacted. Throughout the spring and the beginning of summer, we tried to be as proactive as possible, anticipating questions from students, parents, and staff members. This led to the development of Dr. Bracy's two weekly messages, one written for families and one written for staff. Each Sunday evening, he would share the updates from the week along with the context of any changes for the school division. These were then loaded on the website, the public page for families and the staff-only page for staff, with the family message posted on all the division's social media channels. In the summer months, communications was intimately involved with the preparations to return, from creating and launching parent and staff surveys and designing one-page graphics of reopening options, to the monitoring of questions and concerns for each option and preparing presentation models, uh, materials. By the time the 2021 school year started, we had launched a full-scale school reopening webpage that had an intensive FAQ, a virtual learning subpage with videos and links to help families navigate the new online learning environment, and of course, departmental updates, including plans from Health Services and for athletic programs. As reopening decisions were made and revisited, we would communicate directly with families via our PPS connect messages, social media posts, updates to the FAQ, more updates to the FAQs, uh, some more updates to the FAQs, and then that webpage content on the school reopening webpage. Following the board's final vote on March 4 to have select students return April 12, we finalized our school reopening manual, complete with mitigation strategies, health standards, and samples of school schedules. We also had streamlined the entire website to include current information and resources to make it as easy to navigate as possible for all of our staff and families making plans for their return. While we were all thrust into the immediate whirlwind due to COVID-19, I do want to stop and praise the communications staff, Diane Bream, Annette Herbert, and Sonya Anderson, who are hiding behind cameras right now, for all of their efforts to keep us transparent, clear, and efficient, as we, as efficient as we could be, in all of our work to keep our staff and our families informed. While COVID has dominated the conversations of the past year, it has not been the only work of our department. I'm happy to share with you that we continued a number of ongoing projects. So, here's my shameless plug once again. If you do not already follow us on social media, make sure to friend or follow us at PortsmouthVA Schools on Twitter, or at PPSVA on Instagram and Facebook. Last year, in concert with our new logo and our new brand, we launched our #PPSShines hashtag in school division posts. We also continued our Caps and Gowns hashtag, C-A-P-P-S, for those that are watching at home, for all of our drive-through graduation ceremonies. The week following our graduation coverage, we had 2,262 engagements on our Twitter page, which led to more than 27,800 impressions. On Facebook, our photo albums and posts led to 9,794 engagements, which brought more than 127,000 impressions to the page. We also had 669 engagements on our Instagram page and 8,186 impressions. This activity represented a 17% increase on Twitter from last year, a 60% increase on Facebook, and a 44.5% growth on our Instagram page. So, we were very excited about that, and we were also excited that those growth trends were not just for graduation week. Since July 1, there have been more than 250,000 impressions on Twitter, and most excitingly, we saw a 66% increase in mentions for engagement compared to similar timeframes from last year. On Facebook, we've had 707,621 impressions since July 1 with close to 94,500 engagements. In fact, comparing during similar timeframes from last year, we had more than 117,000 more impressions this year. And on Instagram, we had 22,639 impressions on that channel, and we grew the platform with 196 more followers since July 1. That's a growth of about 19% just on our Instagram channel. So, we are seeing that the consistent presence and the continued flow of information on our channels has led to building a stronger foundation for our social media platforms, and that work will continue. On the media front, we have sustained our strong relationships with local reporters and news desks, both to share breaking news from the division as well as to work directly with them on any of their requests. Portsmouth Public Schools was the only K-12 school division asked to be represented as part of the WTKR Rebound Advisory Board, a regional group that met weekly to discuss issues and opportunities with reopening and a pandemic. That invitation is directly related to the division's set priorities with, uh, set priorities on transparency as well as availability with all of our media requests. In fact, since
Yes.
Mr. Parent. Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker? Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous?
Much agenda item 3.2, consideration of a religious exemption. Roll call vote, we need to entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval.
Atkinson.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Atkinson and second by the Board Member Tillage, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Parent? Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker? Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous?
Thank you, agenda item 3.3, discussion, annual special education plan in part B flow through for 2021-22 school year.
Good evening Chairman Parent.
Testing, testing. Good evening Chairman Patillo, Vice Chairman Atkinson, Dr. Bracy, members of the school board. I'm here this evening to present the 2021-222 annual special education plan on behalf of the Office of Special Education and Related Services. This plan outlines a former agreement between the local school board and the Virginia Department of Education regarding the provisions of special education and related services for students with disabilities. All federal monies allocated in the annual plan solely benefit students with disabilities. On Tuesday, March 9, 2021, the Portsmouth Special Education Advisory Committee, known as CAC, met and approved the plan in accordance to VDOE regulations. And tonight, I have a few board members with me. I have Chairman Shirley Edwards, Vice Chair Gloria Burns, and Board Member Mrs. Blackman-Winn. They are here today to support the plan. You have received a copy of the annual special education plan application, as well as grant summaries for Grant 611 and Grant 619. Grant 611 funds school age students with disabilities from K through 12 in the amount Grant 619 funds our preschoolers with disabilities in the amount of $185,390. As you note from the summary sheets, the majority of the grant is used for salaries and benefits. The next largest amount is used for contracted services. The grant also provides funding for staff development, instructional materials, and supplies. Finally, in your packet, you received an updated copy of the interagency agreement with Hampton Roads Regional Jail. The plan is due to VDOE by May 14, 2021. Thank you for your time and consideration. Are there any questions?
Any questions from board members?
Yes, sir.
That means you did a superb job, thank you so much.
Oh, thank you so much.
Agenda item 3.4, the communications report by Ms. Lauren Naresco.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Good evening. Good evening Chairman Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, and members of the board. I am so excited to be here tonight to present the annual communications update for the 2021 school year. So we'll start right at the beginning. Roughly a month after the last communication update to the board, the announcement was made that all schools were to be closed for the rest of the school year as the COVID-19 coronavirus began to spread in the state. While we had mapped out some proactive goals and measures for the rest of the year and for the 2021 school year, like every other faction of K-12 education, communications really began operating out of a crisis response model. So what did that look like? It was multifaceted. For one, we created a coronavirus webpage where we were posting the latest updates from the Health Services Office, the Health Department, and the CDC. This page became the foundation of some of the most basic questions about the virus, including, as you may be able to see on the screen, once school operations were impacted. Throughout the spring and the beginning of summer, we tried to be as proactive as possible, anticipating questions from students, parents, and staff members. This led to the development of Dr. Bracy's two weekly messages, one written for families and one written for staff. Each Sunday evening, he would share the updates from the week, along with the context of any changes for the school division. These were then loaded on the website, the public page for families, and the staff-only page for staff, with the family message posted on all the division's social media channels. In the summer months, communications was intimately involved with the preparations to return, from creating and launching parent and staff surveys, and designing one-page graphics of reopening options, to the monitoring of questions and concerns for each option, and preparing presentation models, uh, materials. By the time the 2021 school year started, we had launched a full-scale school reopening webpage that had an intensive FAQ, a virtual learning subpage with videos and links to help families navigate the new online learning environment, and of course, departmental updates, including plans from Health Services and for athletic programs. As reopening decisions were made and revisited, we would communicate directly with families via our PPS connect messages, social media posts, updates to the FAQ, more updates to the FAQs, uh, some more updates to the FAQs, and then that webpage content on the school reopening webpage. Following the board's final vote on March 4 to have select students return April 12, we finalized our school reopening manual, complete with mitigation strategies, health standards, and samples of school schedules. We also had streamlined the entire website to include current information and resources to make it as easy to navigate as possible for all of our staff and families making plans for their return. While we were all thrust into the immediate whirlwind due to COVID-19, I do want to stop and praise the communications staff, Diane Bream, Annette Herbert, and Sonya Anderson, who are hiding behind cameras right now, uh, for all of their efforts to keep us transparent, clear, and efficient as we, uh, as efficient as we could be in all of our work to keep our staff and our families informed. While COVID has dominated the conversations of the past year, it has not been the only work of our department. I'm happy to share with you that we continued a number of ongoing projects. So here's my shameless plug, once again, if you do not already follow us on social media, make sure to friend or follow us at PortsmouthVA Schools on Twitter, uh, or at PPSVA on Instagram and Facebook. Last year, in concert with our new logo and our new brand, we launched our PPS shines hashtag in school division posts. We also continued our caps and gowns hashtag, C-A-P-P-S, for those that are watching at home, for all of our drive-through graduation ceremonies. The week following our graduation coverage, we had 2,262 engagements on our Twitter page, which led to more than 27,800 impressions. On Facebook, our photo albums and posts led to 9,794 engagements, which brought more than 127,000 impressions to the page. We also had 669 engagements on our Instagram page and 8,186 impressions. This activity represented a 17% increase on Twitter from last year, a 60% increase on Facebook, and a 44.5% growth on our Instagram page. So we were very excited about that, and we were also excited that those growth trends were not just for graduation week. Since July 1, there have been more than 250,000 impressions on Twitter, and most excitingly, we saw a 66% increase in mentions for engagement compared to similar timeframes from last year. On Facebook, we've had 707,621 impressions since July 1, with close to 94,500 engagements. In fact, comparing during similar timeframes from last year, we had more than 117,000 more impressions this year. And on Instagram, we had 22,639 impressions on that channel, and we grew the platform with 196 more followers since July 1. That's a growth of about 19% just on our Instagram channel. So we are seeing that the consistent presence and the continued flow of information on our channels has led to building a stronger foundation for our social media platforms, and that work will continue. On the media front, we have sustained our strong relationships with local reporters and news desks, both to share breaking news from the division as well as to work directly with them on any of their requests. Portsmouth Public Schools was the only K-12 school division asked to be represented as part of the WTKR Rebound Advisory Board, a regional group that met weekly to discuss issues and opportunities with reopening and a pandemic. That invitation is directly related to the division's set priorities with, uh, set priorities on transparency, as well as availability with all of our media requests. In fact, since July 1 of this school year, we have documented 151 separate media inquiries, and that's in addition to the 15 FOIA requests that we handled. Next up, one of the charges of the Communications Department is to build and expand our partnership program. With that work, we were able to compile the first-ever comprehensive listing of school partners and partnerships. At the end of the 2020 school year, we had more than 260 individual school partners working with our schools and students. And while we anticipate this year's, this year's numbers will most likely be altered somewhat due to the extended closure, we're happy to have such strong baseline data to use moving forward with our partnership program. Last year, as you might remember, one of our big priorities was the redesign of our website, ppsk12.us. We are currently at work applying the same thinking and ideas to address our individual school websites. We pulled together a committee of staff members from the schools to identify what they would like and maybe not like in their school template, their school website, and then we worked with our web provider to select a template that best met that feedback. Beginning July 1, all schools will have the same template, which will make it easier for families with children at multiple locations, or for staff members who work at multiple schools, to find information on the sites as well as to overall navigate them. In conclusion tonight, I wanted to end with one of the biggest highlights for our department, the Here to Help campaign. At the board's request in January, we began work on a multimedia campaign in promotion of the division's mental health resources for students, staff, and families in need. Thanks to the stellar work of our school counseling and school psychology teams, the division had a plethora of digital activities and articles that have been posted for families since schools were closed in March of 2020. We had our division's staff members who were ready and able to meet with students who were struggling, and, as you know, we also have an extraordinary employee assistance program that is available year-round at no cost for all of our staff. With this in mind, we really put on a full-court press campaign, complete with a four-week advertisement contract with Wavy TV, multiple media interviews, web stories, and posts. We designed a new and improved Here to Help webpage. Again, all of the content was already there, so we didn't have to go looking for it, but this was more of a streamlined and enhanced design, and it also boasted a post, a custom campaign video starring our very own PPS school psychologists and school counselors. So for those of you who have not seen it yet, I'd like to take a moment to share it with you now.
This has been a challenging time. We haven't been together in months. We can't meet with family and friends like we used to. We may have even lost loved ones.
It's enough to upset anyone. It's all right to not feel like yourself. Sometimes it's normal to feel, well, not normal.
But you don't have to feel like you're facing this alone. Portsmouth Public Schools have been hard at work to provide effective mental health resources for our community, especially during this prolonged closing.
For our students, even though schools are not open, your school counselor is always available to talk to you. The division also has an office of school psychology, where staff is available to help you if you need a little extra support.
Any of our staff who is in need can connect immediately to a professional counselor free of charge, thanks to our ongoing partnership with Optima Health.
For our families, we've compiled a list of resources to help you have conversations at home, including step-by-step guides on how to talk about loss, feelings of isolation, or overall anxiety. These lists are updated routinely to give you the latest research and best information possible.
Whether we see you in person or on screen, we care about you and want to make sure you're doing okay.
If you need to talk, we're here to listen.
If you feel overwhelmed, we're here to assist.
If you want to learn, we are here to share.
Even if we're not together, we're always here to help. Learn more at ppsk12.us/here to help.
We also were cognizant that not every family would have access to our digital marketing efforts, so we wanted to make sure we were covering every possible medium to reach them. We had postcards printed and direct mail to every student and staff household. The postcards not only shared the website location, but also the direction to call schools, again, if internet access was a barrier, um, for them to be able to utilize these resources. We also had T-shirts made for all of our counseling and psychology staff with the Here to Help logo, so they can wear them when they're at their school and also when they're out in the community. We used our social media pages to share the website link, but also to special, to share some special cameo videos featuring Cedric the Entertainer and Anthony Anderson. Of course, we also had Portsmouth's own PD Ray Red, who gave the campaign a great shout-out video as well, so thank you to him. And finally, thanks solely in part to the partnership with the Portsmouth Health Department, we were able to secure 17 billboard locations within the city for an eight-week run, so two months, pointing people back to that Here to Help webpage. We have seen tremendous results from the campaign. Comparing visitation to the page from March of 2020 to February 2021, traffic increased more than 1,000% with close to 3,000 visitors throughout that first month. So due to the strength of this campaign, we're going to continue to build upon it, and not just from the pandemic relief side of things, but also as we showcase the many ongoing mental health offerings we have in the division. So with that, I thank you for this time to highlight our work, and I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you so much. Not take a lot of time. I tell you all the time that we're lucky and fortunate to have you, and you do a phenomenal job keeping us and our families informed, and hopefully we can get you some more help soon to help you do the job that you do. Do you have any more remarks or comments from board members?
Wanted to, um, give you and your team a round of applause. I mean, the numbers speak for themselves.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes, I, I want to echo the same thing. Great job on the, especially the Here to Help, since I've been on the board. That was an awesome campaign, and the updates to the website, especially with the COVID and reopening, just want to say great job. And then I want to ask a question because I know, um, with the Here to Help campaign, with the video, and then Dr. Bracy's message video, are you, um, do you have students working with you, or interning, or the possibility to intern and use some of our Portsmouth Public Schools, high school students to maybe intern with social media help, or also with the video help?
Um, so there is a television production course, that is a CTE course offering through Norcom, which is where all of, um, the, our, our video production is based out of.
Yep, I'm familiar with that.
So, yes, it is a great partnership that we do have students who will come learn from, from our team, and then we're able to, and you'll get some ideas from them as well, but we don't have a formal internship program, um, with students, but that's something that we could look into.
Yes, I would like us to look into that. Thank you so much.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes, um, I also want to echo the sentiments that, um, my fellow colleagues have said. Um, thank you and congratulations on a great, um, social media presence and communication strategy. Contrary to popular belief, um, I'm not one of those millennials that are on Twitter that often, and so, um, just when I first got on Twitter and to see the, um, engagement that PPS had in the individual schools, um, that was great, and, um, it was a great way to make sure students and parents are engaged as well. And the Here to Help campaign, I mean, I've seen the signs everywhere, I've seen it all over social media, so I want to thank your team, as well as the team that put together the Here to Help program. I think it's a great initiative, um, especially, um, as we're trying to get through this pandemic. Um, and also echoing what School Board Member, um, Edmunds Thomas has said, um, I think it would be great to see an internship with our students to be able to take part in the communications, um, as well as the video, um, videography for the, um, school system. I think that would be a great asset, and, um, also to help get some of the, um, young people's ideas on how they can engage in social media as well.
Thank you, yep.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 3.5, discussion, agenda review for April 29, 2021. Uh, it's in board docs already, and of course, if you have any additions or suggestions, please email myself or Dr. Bracy, board members, for those to be included in our next agenda. Agenda item 3.6, discussion item, the science textbook adoption. Would that be, oh, Ms. Nelson? Amazing, Ms. Nelson.
Good evening Chairman Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, School Board Members, Dr. Bracy, and all those assembled. With me tonight are the four science specialists, Mr. Lewandowski, Mr. Neef, Mrs. Nichols, and Mrs. Williams. I provided a splash sheet for you with some information about the Discovery Ed techbooks that we're hoping to have you vote on next, next board meeting. They are extraordinary assets for us. Um, we would be able to have K to 12, which the continuity would provide a real plus. I think the splash sheet speaks for itself. We stand ready to answer questions.
Do we have any questions from board members at this time? Thank you for the information, did include, Ms. Nelson, it was very helpful, and, uh, if we do have any other further questions, I'm sure we can shoot your email at that time.
Chair.
Oh, sorry.
Chair.
I missed a matter, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Hines.
Thank you, um, Ms. Nelson, it's always good to see people, um, but when you're coming with textbooks, it always makes me happy. Um, these are digital textbooks for K-12?
Correct.
And are there any manipulatives, are there any sets to do extra labs, especially for our elementary students, that go along with these so that we can get some hands-on? So it's not just a textbook, it's a set, it's a resource?
Yes.
For all of our teachers that is hands-on and digital?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're hitting all the bases, as always you do, but I just need to double check. Thank you very much.
Mr. Parent?
I'm so glad that we're moving in the digital world and getting rid of the, um, the textbooks because by the time it goes to the adoption and all of the process, the books are outdated anyway. So I'm glad to see us moving in that direction, but on the other hand, we are going to have to order, are we not going to have to order classroom sets or hard copies for, for teachers?
We're going to work with notebooks and help the children learn to put together a really fine scientific notebook, K to 12th grade.
Okay, I just wondered if, if we had to order hard copies for some students rather than?
I think you'll like the resource, Mr. Parent.
Well, I'm, I've been preaching, I, I mean, I've been trying to get rid of textbooks, I mean, not get rid of textbooks, but moving us in the digital age because...
Be able to adjust reading levels. The differentiation aspect of it is amazing.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Nelson. Agenda item 3.7, consideration of contract for day treatment provider services is included in your board docs, and we will entertain a motion first, and then we'll open up for discussion if any.
Move for approval, Atkinson.
Second.
Move for approval made by Ms. Atkinson, second by Mr. Parent, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillage?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous?
Thank you so much.
Chairman, I have a question.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you. Um, it wasn't about the, uh, contract itself, but it's about the implementation once it hits schools. Is this an appropriate time for that question?
Sure, we can cover it now, uh...
Okay. Um, my, basically, the question is, we did, we, we received the list of day treatment providers, how are those going to be disseminated to the schools? Do the schools get to choose which provider that they are going to use in their school? Is there a criteria for principals to choose from, or are we assigning different day treatment providers to different schools? So how does it look?
That, that, that's actually going to be, I'm gonna let Mr. Falk come, but that's actually going to be assigned by the Department of Youth and Risk Prevention, Dr. Sandlin's office, and they're gonna go by the, I guess you would say, the attendance and behavior issues and different, uh, data for each school, and they're gonna place a day treatment provider with that school based upon their strengths.
Okay.
I did all right? Okay, all right, all right.
Okay.
Good job, Chair.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to ask the question simply because there is such a list of them, and they, we have so many schools and so many, I just wanted to know how it was gonna roll out for our staff.
Yeah, that was an excellent question. I, I only knew because I sent, I sent them an email earlier, and they replied back and let me know, uh...
Okay. I just thought you had some ESP going on.
That was a great question.
And Chairman Patillo?
Y'all spend so much time together, you know?
So, um, how it was, um, assigned the last time, it is, um, the day treatment providers are assigned to each school, and like, uh, Chairman Patillo said, it's based on, you know, the numbers and, and how, how much staff each day treatment provider have, but to piggyback on that, um, once they're in place, I think my follow-up is how they're gonna, uh, do the day treatment in a virtual environment for some of the kids that are, um, still at home. So once it's in a force, I would just like to see an update on those particular students.
Okay, so if we can, I guess, get Ms. Sandlin, Dr. Sandlin here at the next, um, meeting to just give, uh, an overview on how it'll be implemented, uh, by the students that are virtually in person in the high...
Yes, Chairman, one, one follow-up to that, if we can add to that, what is the, um, what is the assessment piece going forward for day treatment? Because in years past, and I think you and Mr. Parent are the only ones here, um, that remember the conversations about day treatment in some of our schools, and how frustrated we were as a board with the services that were being provided. Um, so with this RFP, which is a big step for us for day treatment, what is then the, um, the evaluation piece to determine if they are, um, basically doing what they're saying that they're doing, and they're being held accountable for what they say that they're doing, and, uh, just so we don't get the, the frustration and the backlash, um, that we've had in years past with day treatment programs?
Yes, and we'll, we'll have Dr. Sandlin, uh, cover that as well. I do know they already provide her, uh, monthly reports, uh, from each company, and that's how she evaluates their success as of right now. I know in the year, the last year and a couple of years past, there have been changes, um, by Virginia Medicaid when it comes to day treatment, and it's affected staffing for each of the companies, and that affected the services they're providing at schools, so, uh, Dr. Sandlin, she'll give a, an overview of that at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item 3.8, I guess we can kind of combine 3.8, 3.9, the board member reports and subcommittee reports, and I'll just, you can let me know if you have, I'm a reporter, Mr. Parent.
Oh, okay. I don't know if Ms. Thomas wants to chime in, but, uh, she and I met, uh, with Mr. Falk and his staff, uh, Tuesday, uh, April 13th, we had a Zoom meeting, and, uh, we talked basically about the ERISA, uh, allocation, which is the, for those of you that don't know, because there are so many acronyms out there, Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Release, Relief, uh, Fund. The allocation, uh, the ERISA 1 has basically about $5.3 million, and, um, it's, we've about, according to Mr. Falk, we've about used most of those funds. Uh, there were more, uh, details about the allo, the allocation and the details with VDOT, uh, and application process that will follow. We also talked about, uh, planning for the year-end spending and reappraisal. Mr. Falk and his staff are working tirelessly because, uh, hopefully, board, you will receive a, will receive an update, not the exact number, but as close as Mr. Falk can give the board of where we're going to be with year-end spending and where the, the reappraisal is are gonna be. Of course, we talked about, Mrs. Nelson's lot left, about the science adoption, um, and, but anyway, Ms. Thomas, do you have anything else you would like to add?
No, no, um, board member, um, sorry, parent, parent note, um, I know with the, what you just said about the surplus, we're looking at having that estimate, um, according to Mr. Falk sometime at early May, so, yeah, nothing else to add. I think you covered most of it.
I, I know we did meet with Operations and Technology, now that Mr. Tillage chimed in as well, but, uh, they've been working diligently, uh, to get the schools open, and I think we all agree the schools were set up properly and beautifully, and I want to give a round of applause for our entire operations staff. And just, I know some of the board members had specific questions, so I'll point out a few things I know we'd be covered. Um, for a couple of years, we've had some complaints about the crosswalk situation, uh, Ms. Hines, at Parkview Elementary?
Yes, Parkview and Norcom.
Uh, Parkview has been completed, um, as of last week, so that we no longer have that issue at Parkview. Uh, I'll have to get an update on Norcom, not sure about Norcom yet, but, um, also with the, the HEPA filters that Ms. Thomas you were asking about, uh, those have arrived and they've been, they're being distributed now, uh, for, especially for all of our and they've been, they're being distributed now, especially for all of our special education classrooms, so that's being done. Teacher desk shields have been ordered for each teacher desk, and we expect those to be delivered by next week. Water filling stations have been added to all of our elementary and pre-K schools, and they also have water bar distribution for each in-person student as well. Another round of applause for transportation. I believe I'm fair, this is a fair assessment, because transportation blew all of our minds this week. On our return back to school, I haven't heard many issues with transportation, and things have been running smoothly, and I want to thank Mr. Privet, also and his staff, for doing a wonderful job with getting our students safely to and from schools, as Mr. Wiggins used to say. Outside lighting at all PPS buildings have been upgraded to LED lighting, with additional lighting at many of our schools as well, so that project's also completed. And all of our elementary and pre-K schools have been set up similar to Lakeview Elementary that you all toured, so that's been completed as well. And the renovation of Churchill High School auditorium is complete, and the renovation of I.C. Norcom Rooms 217 is complete as well, with new carpet and seating. The last thing I want to mention that I know you all have asked about, Ms. Vice Chair Atkinson, new generation communication tools are being looked at now and evaluated on new tools to communicate better and engage our families, which you asked about before, that's being done now as well, and the tools they're evaluating allow for broadcast messaging as well as two-way communication. And, Ms. Hines, I believe you asked, also adjustable teacher stations and carts?
Yes.
They have been delivered and assembled at each pre-K and elementary school, and these stations allow our teachers to be mobile in their classroom, work with in-person students as well as remaining connected to virtual students at the same time.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Board Member Tillage, do you have anything you want to add from operations and technology standpoint?
No, you pretty much covered it.
All right. I do have one question about operations and technology when you're finished.
Yes, ma'am.
Digital signs, I know a few months ago we talked about the signage outside of all the schools and the estimation of what it was gonna cost in a timeline, well, a rough timeline. Do we have a timeline for replacing those? Is that gonna happen this summer? I'm looking at the list of everything that's been done, and while our teachers were busy teaching at home via Zoom, our staff was busy making adjustments and improvements to our schools. So the adjust, the signage outside of our schools, when can we expect to start seeing some improvements and changes there?
Ms. Hines, we are really here tonight. We're here. And in our technology operation, I mean, I asked that question also as far as the signage, and that is in the hands of Mr. Thomas, our purchasing director now, so he's getting those details squared away, and we're trying to have those things done this summer before the start of school in the fall.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
And that includes also those schools that will be having name changes as well?
Yes.
Right. Do we have any other, oh, Vice Chair Atkinson and Mr. Parent?
Just want to update from the MWBE Committee. We haven't met, but we've been working hard for our business owners, and not just businesses in Portsmouth. So, and I just want to give a kudos to Gwen Davis, who is the MWBE Administrator. Basically, what we've been working on, there were businesses that were denied grants and funding for round one of COVID, and basically, we solicited businesses that were on our listing, and because we've been working hard with SPA, Congressman Bobby Scott, and Governor Northam, those businesses who were denied the first round of funding have resubmitted their applications and will receive up to $10,000. So without our program, some of those businesses would have missed out on that funding, so I just want to give a kudos to her, and just having that, having that program in place in Portsmouth is working for our region, so regionalism does matter, so just wanted to update the board on that.
Thank you so much. Mr. Parent?
Yes. Yesterday, Dr. Bracy and Mrs. Durham, and Mrs. Russell, and Mrs. Shoobait, and myself met with the human resources, the school board's resource. Topics were job fairs, there were some dates, the PPS Instructional Fair, which was virtual, that was held today. Elementary met from 9:00 to 12:00, and secondary, secondary met from 1:00 to 4:00, and the preregistration was 35 teachers and seven instructional assistants. The additional upcoming fairs will be April the 22nd with basically auxiliary services, April 29th with health services and special ed, the special ed services, and if I can get the next page turned. Of course, we all know about the COVID dashboard, it's live now, and it's updated daily by 4:00 p.m., and we had a very, we had a very good, informative meeting, and I think that we're on target. Basically, I was very pleased to hear of the number of teachers that have preregistered for the today's events, and they have more.
Definitely great news. Thank you so much, sir.
Mrs. Durham, did I cover everything?
Okay. All right.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes, I forgot. I was, CTE Board met today out at 10:00 at Wilson. I was not able to make that meeting, but did have a email with Mr. Hill, who's gonna provide me the detailed notes, but they did discuss signing day discussion and some additional internship partnerships to expand the CTE program. And then, in the works, between myself and Board Member Atkinson, we are discussing adding an additional real estate CTE, but we're currently discussing with some partners that we hope to bring to the CTE committee next time.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Chair.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you. The Curriculum and Instruction Committee met earlier today, and two things I think the board would want to know about is graduation. Graduation, of course, is up in the air with everything else right this minute, with the limitations of in-person meeting, inside versus outside. So Dr. Carmody, if he had more hair, would be more gray, simply because he walked us through all different scenarios, the different conundrums and the different limitations that he's facing as they work together. So he is meeting with the high school principals next week, hopefully to have a plan finalized by the end of next week, so that we can go ahead and start planning for those celebrations, no matter where or how they may be. I know we are all looking forward to them, and Dr. Carmody and to the high school principals, thank you for taking on a task in this very fluid situation with such a, an event that has the highest honor and regard that we can give our students. So I know you all understand the gravity of that situation, and you will make the best decisions with what you have. So Board, that is where we are right now with graduation. The other discussion that we had that I think is pertinent is about summer school. We are looking for in-person summer school for our pre-K 6 students. We're looking at having it at four, not pre-K, K, or 3-6, K-6, thank you. I'm so used to saying pre-K, I'm sorry. So it's K-6. Looking at having it at four centers, but of course, staffing and the number of students that are gonna want to be interested in it will all determine those numbers, the secondary high school, the secondary, the middle school, and the high school, we have a plan for those students that have missed those transition grades, and so we have summer camp set up for them, and summer school for the secondary students would be for remediation only, nothing new, and if they, if there was anything new, it would be through Virtual Virginia, and it would be for pay. So health and PE will be offered for Health PE 9. As usual, I think that's one of the things we usually offer, but there will be a tuition for that as well. So that's the report from curriculum instruction at this time. If I'll take any questions, or I'm sure Dr. Will don't ask and answer anything, if you have as well. Yes?
Board Member Hines, thank you. You did say that the high schools were saying that they're gonna do an actual ceremony and not virtual, because I just want to make sure that...
I was gonna ask that.
Board Member Atkinson, or Vice Chair Atkinson, at this point, everything is on the table. We're not ruling out anything, and I'm not gonna tell you that, and I don't think Dr. Carmody's gonna tell you that anything is off the table at this moment in time. I think we, I think the push is for it to be in-person. I think, you know, virtual is second or third on the list. I think the push is for it to be in-person. Everything we talked about today was in-person. I did not hear him mention virtual, but at this point, I'm just, I'm gonna say that it's not everything, everything is still on the table, but I do believe that there is a rank order.
Okay, I just, I just want to push to Dr. Bracy and Dr. Carmody that I really would like to see an actual ceremony this year.
Absolutely.
That was a great political answer, Ms. Hines. Ms. Thomas?
And I want to echo that, and I hate to push the point, but how soon will we know? Because, and I'm asking this because I'm sure all of us have been here from parents who have current seniors, and, you know, they were out for their junior year, and they definitely want that in-person graduation.
And we, that, that pressure is being felt from us, it's also being felt at the offices of the, of the high schools, and of Dr. Carmody, and of Dr. Bracy's office. The push is to have a plan finalized by the end of next week.
Okay.
So at this point, outside stadiums is what we're looking at, the fear of an outside venue is the fact of it's June, and it's hot, and it's rain, so, you know, that's one. An inside venue might call for a different way of doing a graduation, maybe you have cohorts of students, or you group students to come in separate times. There's a lot of variations, there's a lot of moving parts, but they're gonna do what they feel is best, and so we're hoping to have something by the end of next week. So once we get it finalized, Dr. Carmody and his team will make sure that we know and that it is out. But that pressure that we feel about graduation, they're feeling it just as well. So we want people to be able to plan, we have people that want to bring people in from out of town, and all that, you know, all that goes in with graduation, so that is not lost.
I have one more question, and this probably is for, in your report, Board Member Hines, kind of, you hit on a lot of topics I was gonna ask about, so I appreciate you have included those in your report with the committee, and I think this is gonna be for Dr. Bracy. I know we were trying to, you know, get everything settled for the back-to-school and reopening, and then we were gonna address the summer school, the transitioning program. Where are we with that? Board Member Hines, you talked about it, but do we know when we'll have some dates? I know we kind of have like six weeks left in school, so just for planning purposes, are we ready? Do we think we'll have some more information and dates to provide to parents anytime soon?
Dr. Carmody is meeting with the high school principals next week, and one of the things that they're gonna be looking at are establishing dates and what the transition plan will look like. If you remember, their earlier conversation we had, we talked about not only transitioning the rising ninth graders, but also the rising 10th graders, because they missed out on that opportunity as well, towards orientation into the high school. So that's something that they're gonna be working to put into place, and we'll give you more information once we have it.
And I heard, I think I heard Board Member Hines said there's a tuition associated with the summer school, is that what you...
For remediation, no. For any students that want to take classes to get ahead, there would be a tuition associated with it. The only class that we will be off, you know, that, that we know of that we're offering right now that requires tuition is that health and PE class, or Health PE 9.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Now, I want to say, I want to thank all the board members for attending your committee meetings, it's such a fresh, refreshing feeling, your committees have all the answers to all the questions, and it makes it easy on the staff too, I'm sure, having to come to the microphone. But thank you all so much for your dedication with that. If we don't have...
Oh, I still have...
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Hines, I didn't mean to cut you off.
I'm done with committee, I have, you know, my comments that I want to give. I just want to give a shout-out to all the staff, all the teachers, the custodians. This week was, was met with a lot of trepidation, this, this week was met with a lot of angst, and I don't want to put anger in there, but fear, trepidation, those good SAT words for our young ones watching at home. But I will say, the only thing I have heard has been kudos for all staff. So I wanted you all to know from the people that, that are the consumers of what it is that I say we have done, but really, it's the hard work that you guys have done, the consumers are thankful for what we have done, they are proud to send their kids back. From what I understand, we have parents that are begging to get their kids back into school, but the teachers are talking about how awesome the custodians are, how supportive their building principals are, the, they're talking about how sweet and how much they had forgotten about the little cares, the little things that the kids would bring in. So I have heard nothing but kudos about our reopening this week, so I just wanted to say thank you and share those kudos with you all, because it's very easy to get the hard-to-hear information, but we don't always hear the good stuff. So I want to make sure that everybody hears that it is good stuff that is coming from the community for what we have done this week. So thank you all so very much for having it all together and welcoming our friends and our babies back with open arms. So thank you. And I do have one more question, Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
It's gonna be for Mr. Falk.
Mr. Falk?
It's the same question I always ask, Mr. Falk. Are we gonna have an RFP for rezoning? Are we gonna have a contract?
Well, the RFP comes back, I believe right now, it's the 22nd. We've gotten all the questions in, and we're waiting for that RFP to come back. Obviously, Ms. Hines, you know, with an RFP, once you get that back, then you have to get your committees together to discuss those vendors, those proposals, as well as then bring those vendors in when you shortlist them for that purpose. So I can't tell you that it's gonna be next week, but what I'll tell you is, as soon as those are coming in, and some of them have already come in, we will get our committees together and start the process of evaluating those RFPs, and then going through the process from there.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. And before we...
I yield. I yield.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
And before we close, I also want to give a shout-out to Ms. Lewis and Mr. Jamison and the John Tyler staff for hosting us on tonight. And thank you for our beautiful coffee mugs and...
Thank you.
And water bottles, it's always great when you get gifts from schools, I really appreciate that. And Mr. Jamison was here earlier representing the school, and also Dr. Neal is here now representing John Tyler, so thank you all for hosting us on this evening.
Thank you.
And the last thing I want to add is for board members, I want us to be creative with our retreat this year, so if you all can think of any creative ideas or agendas and agenda items, please start shooting those to me so we can start just doing something a little different, and make sure we hit all of our areas of interest, and act as though we've never had an agenda before, so we can take it from scratch. That's something I was thinking about, and I want everyone to be really effective with our retreat this year. There's no other comments or concerns? Thank you all again for coming. Ms. Hines, will you entertain, give me a motion?
Move for adjournment.
This meeting is now adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.